It is 6:30 and the board is returning to open session. Board members, does anyone have any motions related to the first closed agenda item?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations of Matthew Gutierrez for Chief of Schools for the Office of Superintendent, one-year term employment contract for personal additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale, policies, and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
I second. Anna makes a motion, Trish seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor, motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to recognition, spotlight on learning our leaders in technology.
Good evening. Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing, we're here to talk to you about our Leaders in Technology program at the secondary campuses in the district. So my name is Matt Prowsy. I'm the Director of Hardware and Software Support for the district.
I'm Russell Watson. I am the Manager of Secondary Technology for the district.
Students who are accepted into the Leaders of Technology program have the very unique opportunity to learn from our amazing campus technologists. They learn all kinds of different skills, but they really act as the first line of support for other students, helping them with devices, software, and just general user technical support. These student techies, which we sometimes call them, also provide just-in-time classroom support for teachers and staff, always just trying to minimize any type of instructional time loss due to a technology incident.
And we train them to do all this technology help, and we utilize them in the summer. Summer is our busy time in technology because we have thousands and thousands of computers to get ready, classrooms to put together, labs to put together, and we hire four to six temporary employees, and we take the cream of the crop every summer and put them to work, and so they can actually learn, they actually earn money for this. We, they learn technology troubleshooting skills, they learn some basic skills of just what to do when you have a job, like how to punch in and take a break. And one of the things that they learn too is that your paycheck may not look as big as you thought it was going to look like, because the government takes a little money out. So this is a great learning experience for them, and they're a great help to us as well.
Absolutely. So we are very proud to announce, and I feel very blessed to say, that we've been able to hire three of our previous student techies to be part of the ITS family. Two of them still work here today, and we're going to be hearing from them shortly. So we're going to go ahead and pass the mics real quick to our campus technologists here to learn a little bit more about their programs.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Kevin Bickling. I'm the Campus Tech at Cedar Park High School. I guess we are just going to talk a little bit about what our role is day-to-day, in particular, what we get to do with our student techs in our program during their class time. Our main function throughout the day is obviously supporting our campuses, software and hardware, teachers and students combined, and front office staff. But we do get the privilege of having a class where we get to have multiple students as leaders, as our techies, as I like to call them, who get to help us out with those things. And so through that class, I like to tell them there's a couple requirements, never is it that they need to have tech experience or know how to fix the devices that we're working on, but I just want them to be eager and willing to learn about technology and have a good positive attitude, because when we're dealing with tech support, usually people send us a ticket when something's not working, and when they have a positive attitude, that goes a long way, even if we can't fix it right away. But in our classes, in my class in particular, they learn how to repair laptops, how to repair desktops, students and staff devices, as well as in the classrooms, they get to work on projectors, printers, document cameras, you name it. But then there's some soft skills that they get to learn, which includes just general troubleshooting, how to work with people, how to ask them more questions, leading questions to get to the base of what problem they're dealing with, and it's really just a good growing experience. Even if they've never had a job before, they get to learn how to, you know, just in a more real, hands-on way than learning from a textbook or from an actual class, they get to work with people in the real world and help them solve some tech issues.
Good evening. I'm Christina Harrison, and I am the Campus Technologist at Stiles Middle School. And at Stiles, our Spartan techs do more than just the technical support, the laptop repair. For me, this program helps with their communication skills, their social skills, and their problem, creating a problem-solving mindset. The Spartan techs write tech tips that we send out to our staff and students each week, and so their written communication skills, they have to write so it reaches every reading level, and they have to make sure that it's easy to read, they're using their formatting skills. It also helps with their social skills. Our Spartan techs get an opportunity to interact with students, not just at their grade level or in their normal social circle, but they're interacting with everybody on campus. They're also learning how to troubleshoot issues, they're applying their previous knowledge to new problems, and they're constantly learning. And what we always say is everything is figure-outable. As students progress throughout the program, it's very cool to see their confidence build, not just in technology, but it's building in all areas of their life and in school. And now for the part that you guys really wanna hear about, you guys are gonna hear from the students now. Devin, can you tell me what you enjoy about being a student techie? Yeah, push the green button, yep.
I like being a techie because I get to meet new people, I get to help people, I get to learn new stuff about technology that I didn't know before, that will help me, like, later in my life, for certain problems. I get to meet my new friends, I get to help librarians, it's sometimes I help my teachers 'cause they, they don't know how to do something. Yeah.
Thank you, Devin. The high school student techies, what skills have you learned while you've been in the program?
Like, like you mentioned, a lot of communication skills with talking about, with students and teachers also, when we have to go into rooms and like ask them why things aren't working, or what kind of setup they have. It's helped a lot with like, learning how to communicate and try to solve problems too.
Thank you. Does anyone else wanna answer that question? What skills have you learned while you've been in this program?
I'm not sure if I learned any skills necessarily. I mean, I learned how they do their computers at the school, but I guess it's, I, I learned a little bit more about networking, I guess. Like, I don't mean like talking networking, but I mean like how their networks work with imaging the computers, I suppose.
Thank you.
When I was a student techie last year, I learned a lot about how the computers worked, basic computer science principles, and improved my communication abilities when walking to a classroom and just needing to like troubleshoot something, and being able to be around people in a public situation. It just improved my ability not be like so socially anxious. My troubleshooting abilities were improved, my ability to think critically. And then at my campus, we had a 3D printer, and my campus tech let me use the 3D printer a lot, so I did get to learn a lot about 3D printing and using one, so that is what I learned.
Thank you. Are you interested in a career in technology?
Right now, I am interested in a career in technology, because I enjoy using technology, basically everything else about technology. And yeah, I definitely like to have a career in technology.
Anyone else?
I've had an interest in technology for many years, but this program definitely even more so sparked my interest in wanting to build a career in ITS, and technology in general, because of how many different areas I was able to explore in technology doing this, so.
Thank you. And why did you choose to participate in our Leaders in Technology program?
I chose to participate mainly because I get a free period, and also I have access to all the equipment in there, even if I'm not doing any, any work at the time. I, I think it's a, it's a really good, not just for learning, and also you also have a lot, access to a lot more materials than other students would, I would say.
I chose to be in it because my brother was in it for three years of, of high school, since he was a sophomore until he graduated, and also because I get to learn a lot of like practical things that I can use in my real life after I graduate.
Thank you.
I joined the program because in seventh grade, I had my gateway teacher, and she suggested I sign up for being a tech aide. And she said I'd be good at it, so I applied, and then the librarian recommended me to be the tech aide, so I ended up getting the one and only position of being a student techie that year, so that is why I joined. Best decision in real life.
Thank you. Alright, I think we're gonna hear from...
Thank you guys so much. Alright, so now we're gonna hear from our previous student techies who work for us. Leahy and Kevin are gonna talk a little bit about their experience during the program, and how they got here.
Alright. Sorry, let me get my script out. Well, good evening, Board, and Superintendent Gearing. It's a pleasure to be, for me to be up here and with our student techies and talk about how the program helped me, and just briefly talk about it. From a very, very young age, I've always had a passion for technology, and, but when it, what was always most important to me was being able to help others. So when I heard about the program during my freshman year, I'd heard about how it empowered students and allowing them to gain real-world experience in IT, as well as work with an IT professional at the campus level, and develop also skills like problem-solving, you know, working your communications skills, as well as time management, and computer repair, and customer service. I could keep on going, but we know, I know we have a limited amount of time. But when I heard about the program, I, I knew that I had to join. So for me, it was a real honor and a privilege to be able to work with Ms. Woodward, the Campus Technologist at Leander High School, for three years during my sophomore, junior, and senior year. And to some people, it surprises them when I tell them that during my senior year, I actually took four class periods of student technology aid. So it was basically half a day, every day, at the, at the campus, helping with troubleshooting tickets. So I really got to be able to make a good connection with, with all of the teachers, the staff, the community at LHS. But after that, I graduated from LHS and went to ACC, and after that, I got presented with the opportunity to be, with a job opportunity to be the, the Spanish, first, the district's first Spanish bilingual help desk specialist. So that was a really great honor for me to be able to open that role and help out. And after that, I was able to be, now I'm the, one of the district techs. I don't think I introduced myself, but I'm Leahy Rodriguez, by the way, sorry about that. I just realized. But for me, that, that was a great privilege to be able to, you know, come back to the district. For me, I've always wanted to work for the district, and it was, it's always been a dream for me to be a teacher, so maybe one day I'll be able to be a teacher, tech teacher. But it's, it's really, it's been a really great honor to be here with the, this evening with the student techs, and also give back to the community, empower, or help out our students, our staff, and our community that make up the, the hashtag one LISD family. So thank you.
So similar backgrounds, I'm also a graduate of LISD, I went to Vista Ridge High School. And my junior year, I was the, so the current Campus Tech at Vista Ridge, his name's Rudy Rodriguez, he's still there. I think it was his first year there, and I was one of his first techies, so I had the, the honor of being in his class. But on top of all the skills that these kids are learning, same experience that I had there, it's really just a fun class to be a student aide in, because you get to, it's not just, you know, you're learning in a textbook, like I said. Not only do you learn a lot about the district technology, about computers, about hardware, I already had an interest in that stuff, and that allowed me to learn more about my interests in that time. But you really get to build a relationship with the campus tech, who's someone you don't really see on a daily basis, has, because it's not a standard teaching position. But through that class, and through an old program you guys probably familiar, Cool Week, I got to explore my interest in technology, and that got me connected with a job right out of high school, working help desk in Round Rock. And then after I graduated college, I decided to come back home here and apply for the district, and now sixth year with Leander ISD, and I get the privilege to kind of reshare that experience with my techies that I got to have with Rudy. So thank you.
Awesome, thank you all. So that is our presentation. If you guys are ever on campus at a secondary campus, please come over to the tech office and, you know, enjoy talking with our campus techs and our students. So thank you very much, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, that was a wonderful presentation, thank you, Technology ITS. And next is our citizen comment portion of our agenda, but before we invite the first speaker up to the podium, we will watch a short video.
The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in the Leander Independent School District, like me, my mother's favorite child, as they pursue their mission to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item, which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. The district believes the Leander family thrives and nurture a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. Board operating procedures and BED Locals specify guidelines, so it is important that you have read them before you speak. The Board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. If you're presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in the Board meetings, either by watching them, or you might see some in the audience. And the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be difficult, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
We will start with Speaker One, which is one of our student speakers.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Gearing. My name is Izzy Foner, and I'm a junior at Leander High School. Today, I just wanna say how much I appreciate everything that you do for our district. My teachers and the admin at LHS, you all helped me when I was at my worst. They helped me when I was at my worst, they helped me get back up on my feet when I thought I couldn't. They, along with my family, helped me realize... They helped me realize that my life is worth living. I watched a lot of these meetings and see that there are people who are going to fight against what y'all do, but I'm here to say that there are also a lot more students, like myself, who are here to stand by you and appreciate you all. There are people here to do good, and there are also people here to talk about the good things. There are people who do not realize all the hard work that the teachers and admin put into our district, and the people who don't realize that, I hope they take the time to listen to us students. The time that the LISD community takes out of their day to do all of this is incredible. I know that being on the school board and being a teacher takes a lot of time, effort, and love, so I just wanna shout out to all of you and thank all of you for what you do, and hopefully the people who don't understand will start to understand. I am all in for LISD.
Thank you, Speaker One. Next is Speaker Number Two.
Press here. Thank you. That's, that's why I'm here. My name is Steve Swanson, good evening. I'm a grandparent, retired business executive and engineer, and a thirty-year volunteer in Texas Public Education, which includes working with LISD's Jim Plane, Tom Glenn, Jimmy Disler, the Board, and others at the start of what we call the Leander Way. Tonight's focus on student safety is an opportunity for us to seize our existing responsibilities in LISD policy to govern, growing, and protecting the learning experience and lives of our students, including the Board's role in suicide and violence prevention in schools. President Gonzalez Delacchia, I'm so sorry, I practiced for an hour. We are presenting handouts to be shared with everyone in the district to describe our responsibilities, our oath of office, our policy, our laws, and others, and also, also our handouts to help our senators, help the Board and LISD protect our students in governing education. Having the, I'm gonna, having the, am I done? Okay. Thank...
Thank you, Speaker Number Two. Next, we'll have Speaker Number Three.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Craven. I have been in the district since before I had children in kindergarten, and I have one now in college, so I have been around to see a few things, and I wanna start sharing with the community some of the experience I've, experiences I have had, both good and bad. And ultimately, Dr. Gearing, you are accountable for everything that happens in our schools and our classrooms, and I know that you take that seriously. So first, to express my gratitude for the teachers and staff, who what I'm about to say doesn't apply to. You are the ones who give me hope. Didn't the American Disabilities Act put into place state and federal laws that would protect our kids with special needs to fully participate in schools? We have a 504 coordinator who has said that my child would need to leave the classroom to self-regulate, because apparently the PLC for that area has denied using personal devices, even if they're being quietly used to self-regulate. I think that violates the entire spirit of inclusivity. Can we at LISD operate in that spirit, or does every single thing have to be spelled out? ADA and other laws also protect student privacy. Teachers should not be discussing or asking questions about accommodations in front of other students. The burden is on the adults and the district to use discretion. So, Dr. Gearing, this is only one of the concerns that I have and the experiences that I've had here, and at future meetings, I'll discuss others. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Three. Next, we will have Speaker Number Four. I do not see Speaker Number Four. Alright, so that will conclude our citizen comments. That moves us over to Item Five, which is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to...
Yes, I do. I would like to make a motion to sever items, I have a question on C and D. So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented for Item A, B, E, and F.
I'll second.
Trish made a motion to... Trish made a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, E, and F. And Francesca, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor. Motion passes. With that, we will move right over to the first item that we severed, which was Item C. One second, let me get there. And Brian is already ready for that. So, 5C is consider approval of the resolution claiming a good cause exception to House Bill Three.
Hi. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Gearing. I'm in delay out there, so... Oh, sorry.
Actually, Trish, if you want to ask your question for sever before we get started...
I was just trying to time it. I was like, I'm in delay out there. That's really...
So, we've already gone through the presentation. It's my understanding, because it's on consent, I'm thinking you've got no additional questions. So, I'm not asking you to go into, repeat the information that we already have. But one of the conversations we had as we left it was that you would bring us a resolution that would help us expedite the process as much as we can. And what I don't see in here is mention of the funding that you're gonna need or some of the other things. It is my understanding, so I just... Since I can't figure out how to ask this when it's on consent, I need to be able to pull it off consent and ask you that there's no other items that you're... This before us tonight. This is our first step. You have more items that you will be bringing. You're expediting it as quickly as you can, but also doing it as intentionally as possible.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So, this is the first step to allow us to move forward with all of the other things. So, getting the resolution and the good cause exception passed as a resolution then allows us to work on that alternative standard, which we talked about last time. So, all of that, this just allows us to say, okay, yes, now we can go and start to plan. And we will bring all of the things as we move along the process to you for additional discussion and review and approval and all of that.
And last question, which is, the alternative standard is what we will be approving tonight in our resolution. I also know y'all are moving forward with the process. You're talking to staff, principals, about some of the alternative standard methods. Is there any information you've gotten back through your questionnaires or any of your information that we need to have on consideration as we get ready to take this vote?
Sure. So, last Tuesday, Tuesday week, not this one, we had a leadership meeting. And after we presented on the 24th here, we wanted to get information from principals and just get a sense of mainly around the... Our own Police Department and the single role marshal that we discussed last time. And so, I presented a shortened version of what I presented for y'all, and then I asked them to do a plus delta just around those two things. And so, some of the feedback I got on the plus side was they liked the single role and did not want armed teachers. They liked the fact that they were L I S D employees and could additionally support safety and security on the campus in general. So, that was the consensus of the plus side. On the delta side, it was mainly questions, like, are they gonna rotate or be at campus? What does it look like? Are they gonna be child development-trained to work with our young students, similar to what y'all asked? All of those types of things. There was some concern about the supervisors and the number of supervisors, but I didn't do a good job of explaining that ratio in the Police Department. There was an about eight-to-one ratio of supervisor to marshal and/or police officer, and I didn't explain that well. I did it one-off at tables, but I didn't say that out loud in the presentation. So, there were questions about that. And then, the other question was the budgetary piece. How could this impact whether or not, impact campus staff supports and teachers? Again, all of... Very similar to some of the questions that y'all had last time. So, that was our first pass with principals, just to get an idea of where they were. And then, we'll continue to kind of parallel those two, where we talk about it in administration, talk about it with the Board, talk about it with principals to communicate feedback. And then, we'll expand that out to get other feedback from other stakeholders as we need.
Well, that answers all my questions. I'm fine with making a motion unless any other trustee said. I move that the Board approves...
Well, I have a question. So, I was reading up on this, where they okayed it at the state level that there could be more than one marshal in a school. Is that right? Is that what you are understanding as well?
There's no restriction on the number of marshals that can be in a school.
Okay. But the number that mandated was from the state was to have at least one person. But with the marshal system, we can have multiple people.
We could.
I move that the Board approve... All right. I move that the Board approve the resolution claiming a good cause exception to the House Bill... House Bill Three due to lack of funding and available personnel as presented.
I second.
Trish makes a motion and Anna seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five in favor. Any opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we will look at Item D on the consent agenda, which is consider approval of school and other facilities naming charter.
And actually, I don't have a question unless other Board members do. But the reason I ask for it to be severed is because as it was listed on our consent agenda, it says consider approval of school and other facilities naming charter. And I just wanted to clarify what the actual motion is. We are not talking about other district facilities. You'll give us updates, and we'll get that later. Tonight is simply approving the next school, our School Thirty charter.
Yes, that is correct.
I move that the Board approve the charter for the naming of elementary school number thirty.
I second.
Trish makes a motion and Anna seconds. All those in favor? Six in favor. Motion passes. Now, we will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. We are excited that wonder is back in our classrooms. And that is something that we love to see in... On the faces of our students and specifically in their eyes. And so, we're really happy that learning is back happening in our classrooms all across the district very effectively. So, we're super excited to see that. Not only that, but our staff, our faculty is doing an incredible job of what George Kuro says are the three most important things in education, which are relationships, relationships, and relationships. And so, they're doing a great job of getting to know all of our students, understanding what their needs are, and then making sure that they're starting in that process of meeting those needs. We also had our Long Range Planning Committee convene again this last week. A lot of really complex and intense work. This group has elected to expand the meetings to two hours to make sure that we can get through some of the challenging work that we have to do. Dr. Grissom is doing a superb job of leading us through a lot of that. We were very grateful this time to have Jimmy Disler and Marty in the back of the room to help us through the complexity of the data that we presented to this group. We will be meeting again on the 19th, right before the next Board meeting. And then, we hope to be able to bring another recommendation to the Board from that group on the 21st at our next Board meeting. Yesterday, we had a very exciting morning with our new 2023 Leadership L I S D class. We have 38 of our community members involved in the class. Shannon Lombardo has done really an exceptional job of putting this program back together. We started again last year, and this year is even better. A great, great group of community members who are hungry to learn more about the inner workings of Leander I S D, to build their leadership in the community. And we had a lot of fun doing it. Of course, Friday Night Lights is back with our games happening last week already. This is not just about football, of course. This is about so many of our students and our faculty putting on display all of the hard work and effort that they're putting in, week in, week out, and showcasing that in this wonderful venue. Couple of things to look forward to coming up. On September 18th, the Coral Showcase. If you have never been, I strongly encourage you to go. One of the most amazing things that you'll see is how the students encourage each other from high school to high school. So, all six of our high schools will be participating. It's just an exceptional evening of entertainment. We urge you to come out. And then, on October 2nd, the Festival of Bands. Every year, we have all of our band students at the middle school and high school come out on one night and perform for the community and get all together on the field. Really, another outstanding opportunity for us to experience what it's really like to be a member of our L I S D family. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have more of a comment. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you and thank you to Sarah. The conversations we're having in Long Range Planning Committee are some very powerful ones. And by that, I mean, there's a lot of misconceptions. I guess you can say that when you join a district committee, it's a rubber stamp committee. And I'm just being honest, y'all know that. But what I love about it is that we have a group of individuals from around the district, community members, really understanding what the work that is done in that committee and really understanding what the end goal is. And so, I just wanted to say thank you for listening to our community members and being vulnerable. I mean, I'll be honest. Part of me is like, why are you tearing apart the charter? No, no, no. But listening to their concerns and trying to understand what they're needing out of this as well, I just thank y'all so much. And I'm looking forward to seeing how we can possibly create that same type of input and conversation with other district and internal committees.
All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna jump around in the agenda a little here since we have some fabulous guests. We're gonna move over to Item C1, which is the L I S D Council of P T As presenting their State of Council. So, please come on up.
Thank you. And a quick question. This clicker should work for us. Do we know? We'll try it. We have it memorized, so we're good. Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing, thank you so much for inviting us to deliver the State of the P T A. My name is Desiree Granzo. I am the President of the Leander I S D Council of P T As. And here with me to help present this are two of our council members. So, immediately to my right here, we have Anna Peña, who is our Clothes Closet Chair. And then, there's Jamie Tucker, who is our Reflections Chair. So, these two ladies run these very large programs for the entire district, and they're going to be speaking to that. But before we get there, we're gonna talk a little bit about what council is, what we do, just so everybody is familiar. So, our council is a board. It's a working board made up of 13 members. And we are the umbrella organization over the local P T As. But what that really means is that we are just there as a resource. We're there for training. We're there to be a connector, and that's our primary job. We connect them with the community, with campuses, with the district, with Texas P T A, National P T A. And then, we happen to run seven very large programs. So, we'll get to that in a moment, but let's look at it by the numbers. So, 44 P T As. We were up one campus. Just this past year, we added one. We were at 11,209 members. We hit our stretch goal, which was at 11,000 last year. That's a growth of 14%. That's one of the highest growth rates in the entire state of Texas. We were number one for quite some time, but we had one that edged us out. So, we've got a new goal for this year. We expect to grow about at the same rate this year. So, membership is strong here in Leander. We try to... I go to my Board members, and I'm like, okay, what I really want from our local members is to quantify exactly what the type of work is that we do. We know P T A does a lot of work, but can we break that down into some hard statistics? We're getting there, but we are primarily a volunteer organization. That is what we do. All of our P T A members here are volunteers. We do not get paid for the work that we do. So, all the hours that we put into this are essentially free hours, right? We spend our time and love and care putting that into this district. 67,000 hours, that is an average. It's the law of averages. But if you look at it, it's about four hours a week per Board member. These are just Board members in the district. And that's just over the course of the 10 months that we are here for the schools, although a lot of us do work in the summer. To break that down a little further, so you can wrap your brain around it, if there's a dance that your school is hosting, that's about 150 hours' worth of work when we add all that together. A holiday event is going to be 300 hours of work. 500 hours for a carnival. And that's just a regular-sized carnival. That's not the Texas-sized carnival, y'all. So, and we have some of those out there. So, something to keep in mind. Here are our seven programs. I'm not gonna go through all of them, but just one thing to keep in mind. P T A does that, okay? When you think about these programs, these are P T A programs. Without P T A, you do not have these programs. So, we are going to feature, spotlight, three of the programs. They are the three big programs for this past year that we saw major strides in and that we put a lot of time in. That's advocacy, Clothes Closet, and Reflections. So, first, I'll go over advocacy. Our advocacy chair, who is awesome, last year was her first year doing this, and she's back again this year. That's Amy Juuk. She could not be here tonight, so I'll try to do this justice. But a lot of our recognition from the state level this year, which was the first time we ever really received that as a council, is based on our advocacy efforts. And the biggest thing that we did, it has to do with student involvement. And we partnered with the district for Rally Day. And Rally Day was a time Dr. Gearing was there. And you see some of the pictures, where we got our students involved in the process of going to the Capitol, understanding what the legislative process is, and they had direct access to their representatives. And they led the way. They had a student caucus. They interfaced with these folks. They asked the questions. They got to think critically about this. So, we had a large presence. We had one of the largest presences there with our students in the state of Texas, and we were recognized for that. We also help with voting. We also are gonna be paying attention to the sessions that are gonna be held in the educational session. So, look for that information. Next, we'll go for Arts and Education, and we're gonna turn it over to Jamie.
Hello. All right. Reflections has been an all-inclusive staple arts program in our schools. Through the support and encouragement of our local P T As, our students have found creative outlets and unique ways to tell their stories. Students of all ages and all abilities can and have experienced the benefits of creative expression through this program. In the 2022-2023 school year, we had 22 schools in our district participate in the Reflections program. A total of 145 art submissions were advanced to the council level, including submissions in all six of the categories and in each of our five grade divisions. The council advanced 23 of those art submissions to the state level in those six categories and across all five grade divisions. We had 12 students who received awards at the state level, and six of those students, additional students, that received honorable mentions. We are very proud of our students and all of their successes. Thank you.
We'll turn it over to Anna Peña.
Hello, I'm Anna. I am the P T A Council District Chair for the Clothes Closet. Our program serves all students that reside in the Leander District. We... In the Leander District boundaries. We provide free, gently-used clothes and shoes. We also provide brand-new socks and underwear. Our schools are crucial for our success. They host drives for socks and underwear. So, we call upon them to please keep hosting these drives, these drives because these items often go overlooked, but they play a huge role, they make a huge difference in the students that we serve. Um, last year, we served 4,095 students, 1,723 families. We provided a total of 98,290 clothing items, um, 40,950 pairs of underwear and um socks. Um, we also help nurses, teachers, and counselors by providing clothes in case a student has an accident at school. We provide clothes so students can um resume their day and with dignity and confidence. Um, we help students to volunteer in case they need volunteer hours for their club, like National Art Society, or students that are at the Leo Center that may need community hours, we also work with them. We work with I-CAP students as well, we work with students with disabilities, we um give them clothes to fold and get a scale um with us. We have uh two events, prom event and our teen night, one of our biggest events as well, and um thank you so much for your support.
Again, they run some very large programs in our district, so um thank you again for all the work that you all do. Uh, so recognitions, um, we don't always at PTA talk about the recognitions because we're so busy doing the work, and I told my team, you have to do this, like, you know, you have to shout from, from the mountaintops what you do so that people understand what we do. We did have a big year with recognitions at Launch, which is our um development um conference that we have in the summer. In Texas PTA, we got on the stage. I mean, that doesn't happen often for Leander, but we are getting bigger and growing, and I think we're, we're getting a lot better at this too and, and getting those programs accessible and the state's seeing that. First time we've ever won a key award, that means that we have PTA's that we're running that are in good health and they're doing the things that they're supposed to do. Um, it also means that we're building our membership. And outstanding advocate for children, again, um, Amy did a wonderful job with that and, and building those connections within our district and empowering students. You can see the other awards too, um, but I also want to spotlight um Deer Creek Elementary, second year in a row that they have attained the Platinum Voice for Every Child. What that means is that they have more memberships than they do students at that school. And um, and that's really good. A membership is the most powerful thing you can do, is purchase a membership uh at your campus, that helps us the most. So those are the recognitions. You can see us out and about in the community. Um, we all make it to pretty much all of the campuses and we do a lot of events throughout, so you could just see some snapshots of that, us in action. This is our group photo from the folks that were out at Launch, which again is our development time uh over the summer, so we can get pumped up for the year. So thanks to all those folks that sacrificed a weekend and went out there and learned. Our goals, um, I already said, we're, we're going to increase. Um, our goal is 12,000 members. Uh, I think we'll be a little higher than that, we'll see. We're gonna keep building the connections, um, focusing on the PTA mission, and again, PTA does that, we're gonna remind folks of that. I just wanted to quickly list our board here. I know folks that go to these presentations, we wanna make sure that we get a shout out to everybody. We have a lot of members and they do a lot of work for us and um we're appreciative of it. So this is my last, so my favorite photo of the year, really, um, this was out at Reagan Elementary, so I have to give credit to Reagan PTA. Um, but they've been through a lot of things this year already, and if you wanna talk about, you know, we've got Lionel up there, you know, Lionel can't be wrong, right? Of course you're looking for the PTA. But, but more than that, you know, when I go out to these campuses and I was out at Reagan Elementary two weeks ago to drop off um items that were donated because they were collecting items for families that were still in need from the Palmer Fire. And um if we look at Reagan and Styles and Vista Ridge, they did a great job of being right there in the community, responding, working with their campuses, setting up these drives, knowing exactly what their community needs. And when we have a PTA that's doing that and doing all the right things, they really are the glue to the community and the, you know, the parents, the community, and the district. That really is your community engagement. So where you see those relationships, where you see a PTA that's really doing all the right things, you have those elements for that community engagement. And believe me, I get to all the campuses, so I get to see that. So anyway, Join PTA, um, so just go to joinpta.org if you want to join your campus, pull up Leander ISD as the district, go to your campus and get those memberships going. I'm ready for questions, if y'all have them.
So um, I will not name the individual or the campus, but it was fabulous because when I was visiting one of the campuses, PTA uh person comes out and they say to me, hey, are you a member of our PTA? Can I get you information? Would you like to join? And I told them absolutely, they got me a link immediately, so I definitely see our enthusiastic PTA members on campuses getting word out there and grabbing people as they come in the door. So uh just affirms kind of what y'all are presenting to us this evening. I'd also like to say, it is only one example of what I've just seen over and over and over again in our PTA's willingness to serve, is that there was a press conference event I was a part of uh with trustees across from the central Texas area, and they said, can we have somebody from a PTA come speak? Uh, Trish, we want somebody from Leander. And I reached out to y'all and I really could not give you very much notice, you remember this, as we were trying to find people.
I do.
It was on short notice, but as I kept calling, PTA members were going, oh, yes, absolutely. And I tell them, they go, oh, well, maybe, maybe I could change my surgery date. No, it wasn't that, but it was, it, y'all were trying every way. A PTA member did come out, they did a phenomenal job, of course, but what I just, I noticed was PTA's going above and beyond your membership, doing whatever they can, they're well aware of the issues, they wanna help, they wanna support the school district, and um y'all, it's when I say support the school district, are you here to support the system? It's really, it's the system of people. You are supporting the teachers, you're supporting the kids, and it really shows. So thank y'all for all the work you're doing for everybody out there. I remember I told you, congratulations, and you said it's about those boots on the ground and people there, and absolutely it's showing through, so thank y'all.
Thank you.
I had a comment, so slide seven, I, I think the Voice for Every Child, Deer Creek Elementary, I think that needs to be said from the rooftops because those who've tried to sell PTA at back to school nights or beginning of the year, I can tell y'all, it's not easy. They look at you and they run the other way. Um, however, I'm being honest. However, I think something does need to be said when you have an elementary campus with 100% participation in PTA, it shows a strong commitment between that principal and your community. And I think that's, we also, I believe we had, what, three principals attend Launch this year?
I, I believe it was three, yes. Uh, and keep in mind, there were only 60 in the whole state that attended, so that's pretty good.
I, I mean, I think that right there for me, when I look at PTA, you know, I've, y'all know, PTA is my life, but I think for me, the biggest component and the biggest, strongest thing for PTA in our district is that relationship between our principals and our local PTA's. And you see those campuses where that, where the principals truly get behind and understand what it means for every child, every voice, and the way they partner with your, their community with your PTA. It is, when you find that, it just, everything, I mean, the world could be on fire, but your PTA and your relationship with your administration at that local campus says a lot because your parents in that community are gonna look to your PTA and they're gonna see that relationship piece. So I just wanna say, I'm excited to possibly, I know what we used to do, February luncheons with the principals and do awards, so I'm hoping.
Yes.
Sorry, Shannon. I'm hoping we could possibly um see that again because again, I think that's something that we need to celebrate. It's that community piece, it's listening to our community and just those relationships that our principals are taking the initiative, it just says a lot.
Yeah, and I wanna address that real quick. I mean, I know pre-COVID, you know, that was something that we did all the time and, you know, obviously COVID was a big disruptor. So I feel like a lot of people, we just were having these discussions um today with some administrators about how it feels different this year. It feels like we're getting back into the groove, right? And that's one of those things that we're looking at, hey, we want to have that, and I think February is a great time to do that, and uh we wanna make sure that our principals are connected. And look, pre-COVID looks very different than now if we look at all the principals in the district, right? So um I think that's great, and I'm gonna say, yes, we'll do that, we'll figure out a way and, and we'll partner with y'all to make sure it happens.
And one thing, can y'all please invite us to the Reflections Ceremony? That is like my favorite ceremony to attend.
Yes, yes.
So please, or I'll be hounding you.
We will, I know Jamie will. One thing I wanna say about Reflections, I've seen a lot of ceremonies, I've been involved in different states and, you know, always a part of the school systems wherever I am for the past 30 years. So um, that Reflections Program is the most inclusive program I have ever seen run. It goes from kindergarten to seniors, every skill level, every single skill level, every type of kid, and we have six categories, so it's not just painting or drawing, right? It's poetry, it's singing, it's dancing, it's whatever you're into. It's literally the most inclusive, and I think we have 22 campuses, I would love to see 44 campuses doing that. So however we can help them do that, we will.
We've already had uh three campuses that have not participated before are participating this year.
There we go, right there.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, quick question.
Yes.
And plug, um, who can join the PTA? Is it only for parents?
I love this question, we get this a lot. Anybody and everybody can join PTA, you absolutely can. In fact, a lot of people ask, can kids join it? Well, yes, I mean, we have PTSAs at the, you know, middle school and high school level, it's for the students, right? And so any student can join, um, and because we have preschoolers that are enrolled, it could be from age three all the way up. Um, you can also have people who are out of state if they wanna support, you have got family members that wanna support you, they can do that, absolutely anybody, um, and you can support other campuses as well.
And what a great way for local businesses to support their community neighborhood school as well.
Absolutely, and we do have those um community memberships available on our site as well.
Thank you so much for everything you do for L I S D.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to jump back in our agenda then, we're gonna move up to A1, which is our State Accountability Framework Preview. Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees. Uh, so the end of this month will bring uh the release of our new state accountability ratings for 2023. That information will be shared uh by the Texas Education Agency, and so we wanted to take the opportunity tonight to actually build some shared learning around the changes that we will see in this new accountability system and some possible impacts. So one of the things, um, yes, we're going to focus certainly on that tonight with those changes, but I wanted just to remind everyone of something that we've done for quite some time. And we certainly do not, we look at that information when it comes in, right, with the STAR information, and we look at our state accountability data, absolutely, and reflect on that. But we certainly do not wait as a system, right, to determine how our students are doing and growing and improving based on just those two measures. Those are very summative measures, and so we um look at a very balanced assessment framework throughout the year, and we use formative measures, everything from what I call the uh, the classroom informal assessments to universal screeners, and take note and reflect on that information throughout the year. Um, so our campus leaders, our teachers, will continue to focus certainly on that good solid, on that important work, as I call it, that good solid tier one instruction, the work of our professional learning communities, uh, the aspects of the graduate profile, um, we think about the students' interests and passions, all of that is taken into consideration each and every day. And so it is, I always say it's about the and. So absolutely will we look at this information as it is released at the end of this month? Yes. Are we waiting to make decisions and about our students' needs and their strengths? No, that's not what this information is about. So uh we will be sharing uh those changes this evening and those impacts and starting to build some of that learning around the new system. Um, we also will be bringing in October, we will be bringing in the aspects of our community-based accountability system, which I'm really very excited about. If you remember, those are the things that our community has stated, uh, those are true and dear to their hearts about what we want to look at beyond what our state accountability So for the last five years, our accountability system basically has remained the same. So statute has said we, there has to be some changes, and so uh there's actually two changes that have occurred for the 22-23 school year. One of those is the new accountability system, and we also had a new STAR redesign. STAR is one of the components that feeds our accountability system, and so uh we need to take a look at that as well because those two play hand in hand. So the STAR redesign brought about some changes in the format of how students were assessed. So when we look at that, it's, it's looking at multiple, primarily students shared their learning uh through multiple choice, that's how they were assessed on the STAR. Uh, in the new STAR redesign, that format changed, so there are still multiple choice items, but there are new item types. One of the biggest changes I think there is the short and extended constructed responses, where they're actually writing, uh, and what we call about, it's not being just about a fluent writer, it's about being able to write about your thinking. And so it's about not just calculating, right, not just doing a calculation for maybe a math problem, but how are you thinking through that math problem? So there's different uh extended responses and short constructed responses that were embedded within that estate assessment this year. So that's a little bit different as well. So format of that is new for our students in 22-23, and that information feeds directly into our new accountability system. So because of the new calculations and methodologies that are going to uh, that we're going to actually see within this system, is uh the Texas Education Agency has specifically stated that because of that difference, that we should not be comparing 2022 to 2023, very specifically on those ratings. They should not be compared side by side, and we're gonna actually see some of that tonight as to the why, um, that uh those are not comparing apples to apples as TEA states. Uh, one of the things they've actually stated here is in that last bullet, it is possible that a campus with an A rating in 2022 may actually improve in 2023, but actually have a B rating. So we'll hopefully understand a little bit more tonight as to how that may happen. So uh to help school districts and communities understand this performance within our brand new system, uh, the Texas Education Agency is releasing a what-if scenario to help us understand. So in two, for 2023, uh, in just about three weeks when we receive those 23 ratings, they will also be releasing a, a what-if, and what does that mean? So they have taken the 2022 actual data for campuses, for the district, placed that actual data into the brand new system to say, now look at how that's, that may have changed. So when we get our results in, across the state in another three weeks, uh, that will, we will see the 2023, and we will also see the 2022 what-if ratings along with that.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Just to make sure I've got this clear, and we've got this clear, I guess, for our audience as well. You started off discussing STAR, we're moving now into, we've gone out of assessments, we're talking about accountability. STAR redesign did happen though, that's the assessment part.
Correct.
And so that's new.
Correct.
The STAR redesign, when you look at those scores, and when, we'll talk about those later, but based on that information, that doesn't tell us strictly if students are learning or not. You told us that there are other scores and other metrics that we will look at, that's one sliver. And then if we get, or as these accountability frameworks roll out, you're telling us that it is not going to impact the fact that we're already working on things and we're using, we've used other tests to look at where we need to address things.
Absolutely.
So then the accountability system, when I think about what is it going to be used for, um, directly, I'm thinking if you're in a TIA system, people would see that in their accountability, that, that would definitely be impacted. They see accountability when you're doing your ISO training, that's your training as your school board of trustees. Um, you see accountability impact if there's a state takeover, if TEA has an issue with accountability. So a lot of what accountability impacts is maybe the messaging and, and some of these items uh from, I guess, one point of view, uh, based on how the TEA has packaged these items to say, this is what we want to say about your accountability. But you said we have other measures too we look at, so we've got, we've got a few factors we're looking at, and you're just gonna present tonight what TEA has kind of... and you're just gonna present tonight what TEA has kind of redesigned for accountability.
That is correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
And yes, we have many formative measures, and certainly throughout the year, you will have presentations on our leading measures and formative measures that bring about exactly what you're speaking of for determining that progress of our students. Absolutely. So, let's get started on the changes. All right. So, the overall framework, this is the part that actually remains the same. So, in the accountability system, there are three domains: student achievement, school progress, closing the gaps, and then we'll have the overall that all of those contribute toward. Seventy percent of those ratings are still coming from the better of Domain One or Two, and then the thirty percent is in closing the gaps, where we're looking at disaggregated student group information. So, that will not change for any campus or the district. So, what is changing? So, wanna look at specifically what is changing in Domain One. So, this is the, Domain One is the student achievement, where we're looking primarily at STAR performance. That is for elementary, middle, and high school. So, elementary and middle school, there's really no changes happening for them because that's still based on their STAR performance. For the high school, the biggest change here is in our college career and military readiness target. So, I wanna direct your attention to the example I have. So, in the red box, you see there's a component score of eighty-six. In the system that we've had over the past five years, the target for an A, when it, when it aligns to our CCMR, was a sixty. So, we have had, we are very fortunate, and all of our scores have always been in the mid to upper eighties. And so, we were well above that, not a problem at all. And so, that target has now changed from a sixty to an eighty-eight. So, that, you can see that that eighty-six in the old system was equivalent to an A, a high A of ninety-seven. So, now, it, for that to be an A, that has to be at least an eighty-eight in our system.
And what's the reason for this change in a number, why from a sixty to an eighty-eight?
That was their original target that they had set some, quite some time, some years ago. And honestly, what they have shared is that they've had a number of campuses across the state and so forth that are well exceeding that sixty target and looking at the goals. So, raising that initiative just a little higher.
Yeah, eighty-eight seems like an odd number. Well, it is an odd number, well, it's even, but it's kind of like going from sixty to seventy or to, it's like, that number eighty-eight, it's almost like they ran something in their system and came up with a cutoff that they wanted.
Looking at an average.
Yeah, or a certain percentage of schools. But that's one area where some school districts are suing TEA on that specific change.
That is correct, that is correct. And so, as I shared for us, for, in our district, our high schools have been performing at that mid to upper eighties, right? So, that's very fortunate. But yes, that you are absolutely correct, there are other districts who feel like the increase is quite substantial.
And just to clarify, like what you have on the screen there, so that was from twenty, twenty-two, and you had eighty-six, and then there's that scaled score, ninety-seven next to it. Can you just explain how eighty-six?
There are many different formulas that go into each of these domains. I'm not even about to begin to share all the complexity of the formulas, but they all basically become equivalent to a scaled score. And so, they're taking the raw score data, when we even talk about student performance, it's about a raw score, and that raw score may be thirty-two. Well, that's not their score, it equals a certain scale score, even for our students. And so, that's, but it's all based on very...
But it's the component score they are looking at and not the skilled score.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
So, in Domain Two, which is where we look at our school progress, our student progress, and that relative performance, we see this, and when we look at student progress, we're looking at the progress made on STAR. And I wanna be very clear about that because we just talked about how we look at progress of our students in many different ways. This is specifically looking at progress on STAR. So, you're looking at, at the current year compared to the previous year and how that student performed on the state assessment. They are determining if, how much growth has that student achieved. So, this is only for our fourth graders on up because in third grade, there is not a previous year, obviously, to compare it to. So, this growth then is viewed through a transition table, which you see on the screen. So, what has changed here is for primarily in the past, if a student went from one level to a higher level, they would get a full point of growth. The, because the ranges were very different and because of the new STAR redesign, they have taken the did-not-meet level and the minimum passing level, the approaches, and they have divided that into a low and high, as you can see on the screen. So, one of the things they're looking at here is for, so for even a student who maybe is not reaching the passing standard on the STAR, if the student was at low did-not-meet in, let's say, fourth grade last year, or in twenty-one, twenty-two, and in twenty-two, twenty-three is still at did-not-meet, but they are at the high range of that, they are going to give some growth points for that. And some of this also goes back to House Bill forty-five, forty-five, in which if a student did not meet the passing standard, that we employ intervention for that student. So, that's one of the changes within this domain. Another one is honestly to honor some of that work and that intervention, is for any student that is at the, was at the did-not-meet level, and we're taking that student to any level of passing, then there's an additional quarter point that is awarded for, for that as well. Eighth grade reading to English One progress was added this year, so that certainly contributed positive points for our high school campuses. That has never been included before, so that's a nice change that is actually coming. So, overall, this is one of those that, if you look toward the bottom where it says Meets and Masters, there is, for a student to have earned growth points here, a student had to, if they were at the Meets level, had to stay at the Meets level or go to the Masters level. If they were at Masters, they had to stay at the Masters level. And so, what we're finding, and I was actually in conversation this morning with a couple of other districts, what we're finding is some part of that is just a difference in how students were assessed, is that some of the percentages that we have seen at that Meets and Masters level in the past, we're not seeing that climb this year for, in twenty-three. Not that it's, not that that's an excuse, as I say, because it's not. It's one of those that we need to dig deeper into as to what is causing that, what, what did that student experience? And so, that is an area for us to focus on. Domain Three, our last domain, this is the closing the gaps. This is the area in which we're looking at very disaggregated student groups and that data. So, in one of the first changes here, and this is probably the most complex domain where the changes are occurring, one of the first changes is all of the race and ethnicity groups, and you see that boxed in at the top. We, in our previous system, if you had enough students in each of those groups, they all contributed points toward that campus domain rating, okay? So, they are removing all of those and saying, you're going, we're going to calculate in the two lowest-performing race and ethnicity groups from the year before, okay? So, if we were looking at this example, you would see that although, in this example, they had all students, they had African-American, they had Hispanic, they had white, they had Asian, and so forth, the only two that would be calculated in within the new system would be African-American and Hispanic. So, because they're only taking the two lowest-performing student groups. So, what is the impact of that? So, if I am a campus and I had five different race and ethnicity groups contributing to my domain score in this area, I'm only looking at two areas now that, that is contributing to my points.
So, I phoned a friend when I saw this again because I thought, wait a minute, I thought I knew what they were doing, and now I'm confused when I see it. So, this is the state accountability. This is what the state is saying, we're talking about to the state, how we are accountable to the state. This is TEA state discussions. Federal, though, will require these, these numbers still, I just wanna make sure we're all clear on how confusing this is going to be because this, the federal numbers still have to stay. So, I'll let you explain that.
Yes, and that, and this is the domain that addresses the federal requirements, exactly. So, will we still receive information and data on these race and ethnicity groups? Absolutely, because that is the federal portion of this. So, we certainly will want to look at that information and data. How we calculate or how it is calculated for our state accountability is different.
So, so when we're talking to federal government about our accountability and how we're accountable, that'll be some different numbers they're going to be looking at and possibly different discussions. When we talk to the state and TA about how we're accountable, that'll be different numbers and how those discussions. So, I'm seeing different messages.
Absolutely.
And then, for our local, like our community that wants to know what learning looks like in the classroom, what I'm so thankful for is those community-based accountability because that's, we can actually now add some information because the state and federal is changing, and it's, it's going to be hard to try to splice all this up.
Well, and you will, you will see absolutely different documents. You'll see information that is included in our state accountability, but you will also see when the federal portion of that comes in. Even in the TAPR, you're going to see different things that come in, that will come in, I think, later November this year. So, you'll see different numbers there as well. And yes, it is, this is, this is, we, the purpose is to reflect on student learning, and I understand purpose within the state accountability system. But I am so grateful, as you, you stated, for, one, our formative measures that we use to determine how our students are doing and not just this, this one measure. But also, there are so many other things that we, when we look at student interest and passions and things like that, that's not measured here, right? So, but we will be talking about that October the fifth. I'll come back and start that conversation. Okay. The next change within Domain Three, there is going to be a new group that's going to be called the High Focus Group. So, just like in our race and ethnicity groups, that, student groups that we just talked about, in our past system, our student groups that we've always focused on was our economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, special education, current and former, as well as are continuously enrolled and non-continuously enrolled. So, as a campus and as a district, those points, if you met a target, you received points for each one of those student groups. So, what they are doing in the new system is they are combining economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, special education, current, and a new group, highly mobile, which is looking at foster care, we're looking at homeless migrant, that's what the highly mobile is considering. They are putting that into one group called High Focus. So, let's take an example, let's say it's Brenda, and she is a student that I am in the economically disadvantaged student group, and I'm in the emergent bilingual student group, okay? Whatever my performance was, contributed to both of those areas in the, in the previous system. This is an unduplicated count, so that performance is only going to count once within these categories. Additionally, they are removing the former special education student group, continuously enrolled and non-continuously enrolled. So, you can see, again, we're not saying that the changes we're talking about tonight are positive changes, we're not saying they're negative changes. We're simply saying it's changes to the system and that we will see here in just a few weeks. So, as a campus, if I'm at a campus, I'm a campus leader, I'm looking at possibly student groups that contributed points previously. Some of those student groups may now be removed from my calculations. Also, one of the final changes to Domain Three is group size. So, the minimum group size in the previous system was twenty-five. So, if a, if a group, student group did not have that twenty-five, they, we had the information, but again, it did not get calculated in. That is changing from twenty-five to ten. So, therefore, groups that may not have counted previously, so maybe I was sitting at fifteen in a student group and they were not contributing, they certainly will now. So, it's, it's all about different groups and so forth. This is the, probably the largest one that has the most complexity to it of focusing on the various student groups within our system. And overall, so, we look at the performance in each of those domains that we just discussed to achieve an overall rating. So, if a campus performance, and this is new, is less than seventy in three of the four domains, so Domain One, student achievement, Domain Two has two parts where it's the student progress as well as the relative performance, and Domain Three, the highest overall grade they can receive is a sixty-nine, which is equivalent to a D rating. So, let's look at the example on the screen. If this were a campus, this campus had a sixty-nine percent in Domain One, sixty-eight in two A, a fifty-eight in two B, and a seventy-seven, a C, in Domain Three. Because this campus would have three out of the four areas, three out of the four domains is below a seventy, the highest rating this campus can receive is a sixty-nine. So, if we actually did the math here, this campus would have been a C. But because of the three out of the four, they will be, it will be an override for them to a sixty-nine. The only caveat to that is if a, if the Domain One is a seventy or above, then that will alleviate that override. If a district has one or more campuses with an overall or a domain rating below a seventy, the district may not receive the overall or a corresponding domain rating above an eighty-nine, a B. So, if a campus has below a seventy, we cannot, as a, as a district, have an A. If they have a domain that is below a seventy, we cannot have an A in that domain. Also, how the district rating is derived is changing this year as well. It's using a proportionality method of enrollment. So, have given an example here. So, looking at the grade, the top chart, so we have five different campuses listed with an overall enrollment here of a little over two thousand students, two, two thousand four hundred and seventeen students, okay? In this example. So, in this, when we're looking at the proportion, it's taking the enrollment per campus divided by the total enrollment to give you a percentage. to give you a percentage. That is the percentage that is going to contribute to the overall for the district. So let's take a look at how that plays out. So we can see that campus one, example, has 334, right? They are going to contribute about 14%. But campus two, with 990 students, is going to contribute about 41% to the district rating. So you can see that the larger campuses, enrollment at campuses will be contributing at a higher rate. Every campus will contribute, but they will be having a heavier weight of contribution. So thinking about that, who are our largest campuses in the district? Those fall at the high school level, right? So those will be contributing with a heavier weight to that. So we just talked a little bit about what ifs. Remember, they were taking the 2022 actual data and said, okay, if we take that data and we place it in this brand-new system, how does that change? How does that transition, as I say, right? So within L I S D, looking at how many would stay the same, about 72%, 31 of our campuses would remain the same rating, using the what if. Eight would decrease in a letter grade rating and four would actually increase in that rating when we're looking at the what ifs. So you can see also the state percentages and numbers at the bottom. So you can see that we have more of our campuses, certainly a higher percentage of our campuses remaining the same and less of our campuses decreasing within the new, in comparison with the state.
I have not, I don't know if it's so much a question as a request for clarification because I want to make sure that this particular slide is very, very clear. Because what this is saying is that 19% of our campuses are going to decrease with absolutely no change in the information coming from us.
This is based on the what if. So this is from the 22 data, okay, the year before, in the new system. So we do not yet have our ratings for 23, right? So for, if we just looked at the what if data, this would, what, this is what would have happened with our campuses, with actually no change.
With no change from Leander ISD whatsoever, our ratings in 19% of our campuses go down with the new scores.
Within the new system, taking the actual data and placing it in a, in a brand-new machine, as I call it.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a decrease in the letter grade or a decrease in the score?
It's a decrease in the rating, in that letter grade, yes ma'am. And thank you for that clarification. Great. So if you are excited and want to go home this evening and dig a little bit deeper, I have shared that link with you to our state accountability system. It is very complex. So that is provided for you. So what's on the horizon, what's coming? Well, the first thing is what I'm really excited about. So on September the 26th is the release of our Community-Based Accountability Report. That is for our report for 2022 and 23. And I want to really point out that Shannon Lombardo has been working tirelessly to make sure that that happens. And so I want to thank her very much. She is doing an amazing job and I think it will bring a smile when you see this report. So really looking forward to that. So be on the lookout. Also, on the 28th, we will have the public release of our state accountability ratings. And you will see what those changes bring for that. That will be public on TexasSchools.gov. And remember, you're going to see two, the 23, as well as the what if for 22. And then on October the 5th, I will be back to share information about our actual ratings and we will start talking about our CBAS presentation to the community and all the other wonderful things that happen in our campuses and with our, with our students. And if you have any questions as you think about items and hear different things, please reach out to myself, Brenda Cruz, or to Emily Gray, who is a data magician, as I say. She is our senior coordinator of K through 12 measures and either one of us will be happy to help.
For the accountability, September 28th, this is T E A communications about the 2023 ratings will include the use of what-if ratings. So that means, if I'm correct, the anticipation is then there'll be two ratings coming out? So if it's not confusing enough?
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
Just, yeah.
Exactly.
Any reason why they decided to change their ratings?
They, because we have had this for the last five years and part of, going back to federal requirements, it's really looking at meeting statute of meeting student needs and so forth. So it's part of working, our state is working also with the federal aspect of this and some changes that have to be made. And so that's why the state has to look at a different accountability system.
What are our plans to help educate the public on this complete change in framework? Because I'm going to tell you right now, people are probably watching and they're just like, nope. It's just until it impacts them and their home campus. So what are we doing to try to get that information out to our community that's not a board meeting?
So one of the things, and that's a great question because this is not easy, right? And it takes some time. I mean, I'm going to be honest, Emily, now, when we started looking at the Accountability Manual, I'm not sure how many times we've looked at that information, right, to make sense of that. So one of the things that we've certainly been meeting with campus leaders and sharing in chunks and so forth along the way. But one of the things we're also creating is more of what is something that each campus leader can use to share with their campus community, right? They also look at when they're doing their site-based decision-making committees on campus. This is part, the accountability information is actually a requirement for them to share with that. So we're creating some information that can be shared through that purpose as well. We are also looking at how do we share information through our website, our district website and each campus website to, if you have questions, who do you reach out to? Because it's not always, honestly, I don't want them reaching out to the campus principal for every information on this. I want our campus leaders focused on the information, I mean, on their students, on their teachers, and doing what we talked about in the beginning, right? Keeping the important work, the important work.
I have a quick question. As Sade mentioned earlier, this is being litigated right now.
That is correct.
There are eight districts involved now. Has there been any discussion of what happens dependent on that ruling? Because the point of the litigation is to stop these ratings from being released.
I do not have the most current information on that. I don't know, Dr. Gearing, do you have anything on that as well?
So I don't have any recent information on that. We know who's involved and what they're asking for, but I haven't heard how quickly they're going to make that decision yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just had one, I was just trying to frame this thought in my head. It's, it's almost like the moving target is going to be a given considering the historical aspect of how the accountability system and rating assessment, everything has been done. It's almost like the message that they're passing is that regardless of what they do, it's like they're trying to expect more or expect high, more from every single student. I mean, the teacher's already working tirelessly with what they have, which is not very much resources. And it's almost like we, I'm looking forward to the CBAS report, trying to figure out, like, what can we do from our perspective to really show that the kids are learning, the kids are growing, they're being exposed in the right direction as to what they're supposed to be doing as opposed to, I mean, I know, I remember that when fourth grade and seventh grade had the writing test. It was very difficult. And so they did away with that. And in that one piece that was very difficult, you've integrated it into every single test.
That is correct.
And I don't know, it's frustrating.
I like to think of this sometimes, honestly, as that circle of control, right? Is I do not control, right, the state accountability system. This is something that is for every district and campus, right? This is put, put upon us as a, one of our measurement tools. And that's fine. But what we do control is exactly what you mentioned with the community-based accountability system. Is, that is what we control, is what is it we want for our students? What is it that's the important work that will continue to be that focus beyond whatever this report says? As I say, at the end of the day, if the state accountability system disappeared, STAR disappeared, remember in 2020 when all of a sudden we had that, STAR is not going to happen this year and everybody's, oh, in shock, right? Is, if those two things disappear tomorrow, would Leander ISD change the work that we're doing? Absolutely not. It is still the important work. It is still about our students' academic needs, absolutely. But it's also about those interests and those passions and how are we helping them, you know, live out that graduate profile each and every day? So that's what it has to be, in my opinion, it's really looking at, that is the piece that's in our control. And so how do we make it the very best we can, we can?
Perfect, thank you, Brenda. We're going to move on to item 7B1, consider approval of contracting internal audit services.
The seat, the seat's for you, Jamie. I got you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Gearing. Tonight, we have on our agenda to consider approval of a contracting with the Internal Audit Services. I know that worked with Jamie. We went through a process. We did an RFQ, was released on July 5th. We sent it out and it went to over 216 vendors. Twenty-one actually viewed it. A couple of them, it wasn't their, their cup of tea, per se, but we did receive the three proposals or three qualifications. We interviewed three as an internal audit committee. Interviewed three. Jamie and I were there to open the door, make sure everything was, refreshments were there and were good. Went through that process, had a good, you know, we had three and we interviewed the two. Had a good discussion. I know the committee then had some discussion. I know you worked on some reference checks provided both by the vendors as well as other individuals you may know, work in the districts that those, services are provided by those companies. So the recommendation is, if there is one, is up to the internal audit committee. Jamie and I are just here as a resource. We kind of gave you the community an overview of the process that that went through. But we're open for any questions or if there are any information you need from us, we are more than happy to provide such.
I'll just add, Francesca, do you have a question?
I was going to make a motion.
No, it was, the committee was me, Anna, and Trish. And so it was a very rigorous process going through the whole process of developing the RFQ, thanks to Jamie's procurement help. It was very rigorous and going through their reports and then the interviews and some further discussion, it was really, really thorough. And we think that we landed on some good choices that we had.
My apologies. Sade was the lead person. Trish and Miss and Anna as well were the other individuals that served on the committee. You didn't, they just did.
Nope.
Okay, I was making sure. I was quite comfortable, I know it was those three. So that was my, oversight of my fault. I should have mentioned that earlier, so.
I move to approve the audit committee's recommendation to contract internal audit services with Gibson Consulting contingent upon successful contract negotiation with the audit committee and administration.
I second.
Motion made by Francesca, second by Anna. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Six in favor, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. And we are going to take a short recess. Five-minute recess. All right, um, we'll go ahead, oh, Mark is there, sorry. We're gonna go ahead and, I didn't see you behind there, so I thought, oh wow, I better wait. All right, um, we'll go ahead, oh, Mark is there, sorry. We're gonna go ahead and, I didn't see you behind there, so I thought, oh wow, I better wait. We're going to jump over to 7C2, consider approval of purchasing specialist position. We're going to jump over to 7C2, consider approval of purchasing specialist position.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, members of the board. This is an interesting one, I want to kind of give you, spend a few minutes just kind of giving you some history, how we got here, because this is This is an interesting one, I want to kind of give you, spend a few minutes just kind of giving you some history, how we got here, because this is it's just off, it's an anomaly, we'll put it that way. it's just off, it's an anomaly, we'll put it that way. So a couple of things I want to just clarify upfront for those that are listening or listen at a later time is, one is, So a couple of things I want to just clarify upfront for those that are listening or listen at a later time is, one is, this is not a new position, and this is definitely not a new position that we're being, that we're asking to be added this is not a new position, and this is definitely not a new position that we're being, that we're asking to be added due to the Vader being successful. It's not, I want to clear that and kind of discuss some brief history. due to the Vader being successful. It's not, I want to clear that and kind of discuss some brief history. So if you go back about 12, 14 months ago, the district was in a position where we were looking at, knowing we were going to be So if you go back about 12, 14 months ago, the district was in a position where we were looking at, knowing we were going to be very high chance of being property wealthy, and being in a budget deficit. very high chance of being property wealthy, and being in a budget deficit. So at that time, there were two, I'm kind of paraphrasing, I'm not giving you all the details, but there were two positions that became vacant in the So at that time, there were two, I'm kind of paraphrasing, I'm not giving you all the details, but there were two positions that became vacant in the under the umbrella of my role, particularly both of those positions were under the umbrella of Jamie's role. under the umbrella of my role, particularly both of those positions were under the umbrella of Jamie's role. There was a warehouse assistant and a purchasing specialist. There was a warehouse assistant and a purchasing specialist. My predecessor Elaine talked to her group and said, hey, this is gonna be a deficit budget, this could be fairly substantial. My predecessor Elaine talked to her group and said, hey, this is gonna be a deficit budget, this could be fairly substantial. The Vader was not called at that time, but I'm assuming there had been talks, we're in the process about that potential of doing so. The Vader was not called at that time, but I'm assuming there had been talks, we're in the process about that potential of doing so. And so in an effort to be, kind of get ahead of the curve or ahead of the game, those positions were frozen and they were not filled. And so in an effort to be, kind of get ahead of the curve or ahead of the game, those positions were frozen and they were not filled. And then they subsequently actually were not put into the 2223 budget. And then they subsequently actually were not put into the 2223 budget. But they were told, or the conversation was, hey, if the Vader is successful, then we can come back and add these positions back in. But they were told, or the conversation was, hey, if the Vader is successful, then we can come back and add these positions back in. And that was what was, that was the conversation that took place. Obviously, And that was what was, that was the conversation that took place. Obviously, there was a CFO change in that time, as you, I don't look like Elaine. there was a CFO change in that time, as you, I don't look like Elaine. That's good for her. That's good for her. But we have, it kind of fell through the cracks, the position was requested, I put it through the normal process, just thinking it was a position. But we have, it kind of fell through the cracks, the position was requested, I put it through the normal process, just thinking it was a position. After, it did not make Tier One, it was in Tier Two. After, it did not make Tier One, it was in Tier Two. Then as I got more information and Jamie and I had opportunity to sit down and really discuss the needs of his department, Then as I got more information, and Jamie and I had opportunity to sit down and really discuss the needs of his department, it was brought to my attention, I reached out with Bruce and Elaine and confirmed that that conversation, everything had taken place that way, and so it was brought to my attention, I reached out with Bruce and Elaine, and confirmed that that conversation, everything had taken place that way, and so from my perspective, it was an error on our part, oversight, so what we're doing is, we had, there were two positions, we're just asking for one from my perspective, it was an error on our part, oversight, so what we're doing is, we had, there were two positions, we're just asking for one to be brought back in, or reallocated in the budget. This is a position to be brought back in, or reallocated in the budget. This is a position Jamie and his crew have kind of divided that work out, held as long as possible, now we have the recent bond passage, much more purchasing is getting ready to take place. Jamie and his crew have kind of divided that work out, held as long as possible, now we have the recent bond passage, much more purchasing is getting ready to take place. And it got to the point, we had a conversation, he said, hey, I've really tried to hold out as long as I can, however, And it got to the point, we had a conversation, he said, hey, I've really tried to hold out as long as I can, however, this is, the need is really there. And so I wouldn't sit before you today without knowing that there's a true, true need. this is, the need is really there. And so I wouldn't sit before you today without knowing that there's a true, true need. And again, it's just one of the two, we're going to try to hold off on that second one as long as we can. And again, it's just one of the two, we're going to try to hold off on that second one as long as we can. But, so tonight, we just wanted to bring this to you and seek your approval. But, so tonight, we just wanted to bring this to you and seek your approval. Again, I didn't know if it's a true add, because it was supposed to be a replace, but I did want to err on the, on the side of being transparent Again, I didn't know if it's a true add, because it was supposed to be a replace, but I did want to err on the, on the side of being transparent and making sure that everything was done, or had the appearance, it was done above the line, and make sure that we're all on the same page and making sure that everything was done, or had the appearance, it was done above the line, and make sure that we're all on the same page and there's no assumptions or questions of that nature. So and there's no assumptions or questions of that nature. So with that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions you have on this request, and appreciate your consideration. with that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions you have on this request, and appreciate your consideration.
I move to approve restating the purchasing specialist position due to the successful Vader election. I move to approve restating the purchasing specialist position due to the successful Vader election.
I second. I second.
Anna makes motion, Francesca second. Any additional discussion questions? Anna makes motion, Francesca second. Any additional discussion questions?
Just a clarification too, this position helps with the recently passed bond to make sure that we are accountable, transparent, Just a clarification too, this position helps with the recently passed bond to make sure that we are accountable, transparent, have everything, have reports to us quickly, have everything, have reports to us quickly, all that sorts of good stuff. all that sorts of good stuff.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And was this the only position in that situation? And was this the only position in that situation? This is the only situation we know of in the district, in that situation that was contingent on the Vader? This is the only situation we know of in the district, in that situation that was contingent on the Vader?
Those two are the only ones that we had that were frozen or not filled. Those two are the only ones that we had that were frozen or not filled.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those in favor? Six in favor, motion passes. Six in favor, motion passes. All right, we're gonna move over to 7C3. All right, we're gonna move over to 7C3. That's our discussion of a resolution nominating an individual to the Williamson Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. That's our discussion of a resolution nominating an individual to the Williamson Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
All right, members of the board, every year, each member entity is requested, they don't have to, but they are requested to submit nominations All right, members of the board, every year, each member entity is requested, they don't have to, but they are requested to submit nominations for members of the central appraisal districts. And so, we do it every year, but they alternate years. This year is the Williamson County. for members of the central appraisal districts. And so, we do it every year, but they alternate years. This year is the Williamson County. So odd years are Williamson County, even years will be Travis County. So odd years are Williamson County, even years will be Travis County. So, we have tonight is, it's just a discussion item, it's not an action item, so I just want to briefly walk you just kind of through the process. So, we have tonight is, it's just a discussion item, it's not an action item, so I just want to briefly walk you just kind of through the process. I don't recall, obviously I wasn't here, but I don't really think anything has changed from prior years, but so I'll hit it on the pretty high level, on the high notes. I don't recall, obviously I wasn't here, but I don't really think anything has changed from prior years, but so I'll hit it on the pretty high level, on the high notes. But, the central appraisal districts consist of five members of the board. But, the central appraisal districts consist of five members of the board. You know, the chief appraiser, You know, the chief appraiser, before the October of each year, of each odd year, before the October of each year, of each odd year, the chief appraiser will calculate the number of votes for each taxing unit. The taxing units, they nominate by resolution, one candidate for each position to be filled, up to five. the chief appraiser will calculate the number of votes for each taxing unit. The taxing units, they nominate by resolution, one candidate for each position to be filled, up to five. And that is due before October 30th. And that is due before October 30th. And then taxing units determine vote by resolution, submit to chief appraiser, and those will be due before December 15th. So those are kind of the appraisal district deadlines, so let me just backtrack a little bit. And then taxing units determine vote by resolution, submit to chief appraiser, and those will be due before December 15th. So those are kind of the appraisal district deadlines, so let me just backtrack a little bit. So today is September 7th. So today is September 7th. The deadline for nominations have to be to the central appraisal district by October 15th. The deadline for nominations have to be to the central appraisal district by October 15th. So we actually have two meetings between there, we have the September 21st, and we have the October 12th. So we actually have two meetings between there, we have the September 21st, and we have the October 12th. If a nomination is made by this board, that's by resolution, we will provide that to the appraisal district. If a nomination is made by this board, that's by resolution, we will provide that to the appraisal district. They in turn, take all the nominations, do their votes, and then they come out with a ballot, and then that comes back to the member district boards. They in turn, take all the nominations, do their votes, and then they come out with a ballot, and then that comes back to the member district boards. And they would vote by, usually December, the middle of December. And they would vote by, usually December, the middle of December. So that, just kind of a very high-level process. There are some documents behind that kind of walk you through the process. The third page So that, just kind of a very high-level process. There are some documents behind that kind of walk you through the process. The third page has the taxing unit checklist for board election, just kind of a one-page, real high-level. has the taxing unit checklist for board election, just kind of a one-page, real high-level. And then there's some procedures, and the last couple of pages is actually the general information sheet And then there's some procedures, and the last couple of pages is actually the general information sheet or the requirement for eligibility for potential candidates. or the requirement for eligibility for potential candidates. In a nutshell, a candidate has to reside in Williamson County, has to have their property taxes be paid or on a payment plan. In a nutshell, a candidate has to reside in Williamson County, has to have their property taxes be paid or on a payment plan. They cannot be a employee of the member district unless they have actually also been elected in another governing capacity. They cannot be a employee of the member district unless they have actually also been elected in another governing capacity. Just an example of that, Just an example of that, going back a few years of my life, when I was, worked at a district, going back a few years of my life, when I was, worked at a district, I could not be, was not eligible to be a member of the board of the appraisal district, however, because I worked there, however, because I was an elected board member I could not be, was not eligible to be a member of the board of the appraisal district, however, because I worked there, however, because I was an elected board member at a neighboring district, I was eligible to be, only because I was an elected person. at a neighboring district, I was eligible to be, only because I was an elected person. So if I was not elected and just worked at a district, then I could not, would not be eligible, would not meet the requirements. So So if I was not elected and just worked at a district, then I could not, would not be eligible, would not meet the requirements. So there are a few exceptions, that's the main one. But if you have any questions on that, or on the process, there are a few exceptions, that's the main one. But if you have any questions on that, or on the process, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions or walk you through it, or be a liaison with the Williamson County if the question is I'd be more than happy to answer those questions or walk you through it, or be a liaison with the Williamson County if the question is one that I'm not familiar with. one that I'm not familiar with.
Question on the procedure, and if we want to bring a name, would you like us to bring, to email you, would you like us to bring a name Question on the procedure, and if we want to bring a name, would you like us to bring, to email you, would you like us to bring a name right, you know, in, on the dais? How would you like that procedure to take place? right, you know, in, on the dais? How would you like that procedure to take place?
Procedure, I guess would be easiest, would be, I mean, if you have a candidate and you, there's only one, that's fine, if you, if there's some discussion, Procedure, I guess would be easiest, would be, I mean, if you have a candidate and you, there's only one, that's fine, if you, if there's some discussion, then we would need to bring that at a future meeting, or, either way works. then we would need to bring that at a future meeting, or, either way works. If the board wants to make a nomination, we can put, we'll, we need to put on the agenda no matter what, one of the future two meetings. If the board wants to make a nomination, we can put, we'll, we need to put it on the agenda no matter what, one of the future two meetings. If you want, if there's a lot of interest, feel free to email myself, or super intense assistant, and go through that process and get to me, and then we can accumulate the names, If you want, if there's a lot of interest, feel free to email myself, or super intense assistant, and go through that process and get to me, and then we can accumulate the names, and I'd be more than happy to provide that through a board update. and I'd be more than happy to provide that through a board update. You know, here are the names, and then if that was something that, that a nomination could occur at the future meeting. You know, here are the names, and then if that was something that, that a nomination could occur at the future meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't, does anyone have any further questions about that? Okay, then we will move over to 7C4, our Business and Finance Monthly Reports. I don't, does anyone have any further questions about that? Okay, then we will move over to 7C4, our Business and Finance Monthly Reports.
All right, we have a couple of our monthly reports, I'll just give you a quick, a brief reminder. All right, we have a couple of our monthly reports, I'll just give you a quick, a brief reminder. Due to the time off in late June, due to not having a board meeting in July, Due to the time off in late June, due to not having a board meeting in July, we normally would not have monthly reports in the first meeting of the month, but this is, we're playing catch-up. we normally would not have monthly reports in the first meeting of the month, but this is, we're playing catch-up. And so we will have, this is the July monthly reports, September 21st, we will have the August, and then we'll be back on our regular schedule of having them And so we will have, this is the July monthly reports, September 21st, we will have the August, and then we'll be back on our regular schedule of having them at the last meeting of the month. at the last meeting of the month. So this is just, so you're aware that it's a little different. So this is just, so you're aware that it's a little different. This is a monthly report, I really, I don't have any, any particular This is a monthly report, I really, I don't have any, any particular things to point out, it's just the first month of the fiscal year, so there's really, just, if there's any questions, more than happy to answer those. things to point out, it's just the first month of the fiscal year, so there's really, just, if there's any questions, more than happy to answer those. Same thing with the bond status report, we have all three bonds on there now. Same thing with the bond status report, we have all three bonds on there now. The 2023 bond, we're starting to get some purchase orders and expenses in. The 2023 bond, we're starting to get some purchase orders and expenses in. Monthly investment report, we were just under one and a half million dollars in interest in the month of July. Monthly investment report, we were just under one and a half million dollars in interest in the month of July. And then the last reporter is our monthly tax collection report, and we have collected 99.36% And then the last reporter is our monthly tax collection report, and we have collected 99.36% and that's a little bit down compared to the previous year at 99.65%. and that's a little bit down compared to the previous year at 99.65%. It's a .29% difference, but other than that, we finished the year above 99%, so that's usually what we budget at, so. It's a .29% difference, but other than that, we finished the year above 99%, so that's usually what we budget at, so. Nothing pressing there, but I just want to at least bring that to your attention. Nothing pressing there, but I just want to at least bring that to your attention.
Pete, I know we're, you're still tweaking some of these forms and updating it, and there's some information that is not correct, you're gonna get things updated. Pete, I know we're, you're still tweaking some of these forms and updating it, and there's some information that is not correct, you're gonna get things updated. And I'll follow up with you, I have a couple of questions. And I'll follow up with you, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, appreciate that.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, if there are no further questions, All right, if there are no further questions, it is 8:32 PM, and the board will now go into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551071, it is 8:32 PM, and the board will now go into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and attorney-client privilege matter. consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and attorney-client privilege matter. 551074 deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers. 551074 deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers. 551.0821 deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. 551.0821 deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. 551.074 deliberation and consider, oh, we already did that one, but consideration of employment of chief of schools. 551.074 deliberation and consider, oh, we already did that one, but consideration of employment of chief of schools. No action will be taken in closed session, any action related to closed session items will be taken when the board returns to open session. No action will be taken in closed session, any action related to closed session items will be taken when the board returns to open session.